... For the agents to comply of the United States of America and to do a bond for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Director Callaway Rodriguez, would you please call the roll?
Here.
Director Yushak?
Here.
Director Rindstrom?
Here.
Director Callaway Rodriguez?
Here.
Director Ford?
Here.
Director Grata?
Here.
Director Livingood?
Here.
Director Rude?
Here.
Director Kovach?
Here.
Nine present, none absent, we have a forum. At this time, we will have the student representative to the board come forward, please. And since you're obviously not robbing, could you identify yourself to everybody, please? And make sure the microphone's on. You can adjust it if you need to.
There we go. Okay. I'm Karine Mandarino from the PE Club. They're preparing for their hiking and canoeing trip at Laurel Hill State Park on Monday, June 3rd. TFIM just wrapped their annual conference, Chips of Success. They're continuing with assisting for the Bay Brigade and running the secret pantry. They're organizing the closet so it'll be ready to go this summer if needed and next school year. From the Art Club, Art Club members were able to participate in the All-Day Art Fest, which is an opportunity for students to utilize the art room throughout the day to complete current art assignments, create individual artworks, and interact with other arts. The Art Club also held Tie-Dye Taco Tuesday, where members were able to tie-dye t-shirts as a member of the Art Club to learn about dyeing fabrics and to show some spirit. Art Club members had the opportunity to assist onstage, prepare the atmosphere and decor for grand march. The Art Club will be holding the final event for the year, which will be able to create a temporary mural on the school sidewalk with chalk. The event may also be held as a contest judging members for use of color contrast, incorporation of pattern, use of tests, and potential game. Art Club members will also participate in a collaborative drawing challenge that will take place over eight of the remainder of school days. Members will be challenged to draw on a section of paper that will be divided into four sections. Each member will need to draw a hand in any style that they choose within their section. The hand that's then appeared to be drawing a realistic object in the center of the page. The object in the center of the page should look uniform after each quarter section is completed by four different artists. From the National Honor Society, on May 24th, the NHS and MIC SAD will be taking their end-of-the-year trip to Cedar Point. The NHS is participating in the Senior Day of Caring on May 30th. Students will be volunteering at either Habitat for Humanity, the elementary schools, the stadium, Washington Township Park, Cedar Creek Park, Ross Dravert Township Park, or the ambulance service helping with the ever needs stuff. From Student Council, elections for class officers will take place next week in the ninth through eleventh grade classes. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. And at this time, we turn it over to Dr. Dahl for the recognition of the National History Day state winners.
All right, I'm going to ask Mr. Ross Farmer to come up, and he is going to recognize our National History Day state winners.
I'd like to thank Dr. Dahl and the board for having us here tonight to recognize the students who've made it to the state round of the National History Day competition. I'm going to start from the bottom up in the program tonight. We'll start with the third-place winners at the regional competition. First up, we're going to go with Blake Wilson, Jake Wessel, and Evan Polat. If you gentlemen can come on up. They did a documentary on Negro League baseball in Pittsburgh and how it came full circle with 1971 Pirates being the first integrated major league lineup. So, nice job.
Congratulations, guys. Good job.
Next up, we had a third-place winner for group exhibit, Jayden Garbert, Olivia Cobb, and Alia Delusha Barn. And they did a group exhibit on sign language in Martha's Vineyard and how it evolved into the modern-day sign language. Next, Farrah Reader. Farrah and her group took second place for group exhibit. They did one on Ruth Foster, he was the founder of the Negro Leagues, Negro League Baseball. Next, Trinity Alexander, second-place individual website. Their project was on John Brown, the abolitionist, and how even after he was executed for treason following his reign on Hartford's Ferry, he helped influence the election of 1860 and seeing Abraham Lincoln become president. Next, seventh-place individual documentary, Logan Martin. I do want to mention that Logan, even though he finished second place at the regional competition, he did end up being a state finalist in Pennsylvania. So, if you see that. Logan's project was on the Johnstown Flood and how it influenced Andrew Carnegie to enter the realm of philanthropy, which he became very famous for, of course. Next, we have the group website category, Carter Stasha and Nick Rita. They also were state finalists, Michigan sixth place in the state of Pennsylvania. Our first-place winners at the regional competition will start with Alex Chauvin and Jacob Klein. They were primarily on Braddock and Ford's exhibitions. We'll move on next to Viva Chris. Viva did an individual performance on Wilma Rudolph, also a state finalist, and took third place in the state of Pennsylvania. Next, for group performance, taking first place in the regional competition, Sarah Roushak, Riley Hable, and Sienna Leonard. These ladies did a project on the Secret Six. This was George Washington's spy organization in New York City during the American Revolution. And last but not least, this next group won first place at the regional competition and will be representing Bel Air in at the national competition in Washington DC next one. State champions in the group website category, Jessica Phillips, Lindsay Nagy, Kylie Snyder, Sophia Francia, and Emma Schrader. Their website was on the 1845 Pittsburgh Fire.
The excellent program, look how many we had recognized tonight, so let's give them another round of applause. Next, I'm going to ask Dr. Stepco to come up to recognize our STEM competition winners from Marion Elementary.
Okay, so on behalf of Mrs. Ambrose, who couldn't be here tonight, I would like to recognize our STEM teams. On April 3rd, Mrs. Ambrose's fifth and sixth-grade STEM teams competed against 12 other Westmoreland County schools in a STEM design challenge. This year, the students were to use connects to create an eco-friendly crane that could pick up an object, move it six or more inches, and then place it back down. The fifth-grade team placed third in their division with their Mother Nature's Minion Crane. Yes, it had minions on it. The crane was able to pick up objects and actually move them 360 degrees, and it was powered by solar and wind energy. And our team members, if they're here tonight, please come up. Lila Teets, Grace Roushak, Brian Goodboy, and Akila Engeni.
This was always one of my favorite activities when I was the principal of Marion to go see. I went every year, so I didn't get to go this year, but congratulations. It's tough competition, I'm telling you. It's amazing what these kids can do. So, good job. Thank you.
And now is the time that if you do not wish to stay for the meeting, if you came for the recognition, parents and students, and you do not wish to stay for the regular meeting, now is the time that you are excused and can go ahead and leave. Thank you for being here. our format since we now do the agenda meeting along with our workshops, so the agenda has already been approved. That moves us to comments from citizens relative to the agenda only, and I want to set ground rules, not only for this portion of comments, but also for the comments at the end of the meeting. Since we have a large crowd here tonight, and I'm anticipating we're going to have quite a few people that wish to comment, we're going to limit it to three minutes with the comments, and we're going to ask that you please come forward to the microphone, state your name, and then do your address from there, because Tony Jo Kunkka, our secretary, takes all the notes, and she wants to be able to hear what is said, and if you just speak up from back there, oftentimes she cannot hear. So, we're asking you, if you're going to speak, come forward, state your name, where you're from, and hold your comments to three minutes, and that would be for both the first part, the comment from citizens relative to the agenda only, and then the comments from citizens at the end, and we are going to ask that you only speak once. So, you can come up, say your piece for the three minutes, and then sit down and let someone else have the opportunity, because as I said, I think tonight we're going to have a few people that wish to comment. And at this point, I want our solicitor, Mr. Vic Kushter, to speak as well.
In anticipation of comments regarding the recent student discipline incident that we've had here at the district, I've advised the school board to not respond to any of those types of comments. The purpose of that is not to withhold information from the public. The purpose of that is to protect the school board, the district, and its ability to discipline students. As some of you may be aware, there is now ongoing litigation regarding that incident. So, in order to protect the district, I've advised the board to not respond to any of those comments.
Thank you. At this time, we will open up the floor to comments from citizens relative to the agenda only. Those of you that are new here, what I usually do is I start at one end, and I work my way across. If you wish to speak, raise your hand, we'll call you up. If you don't wish to speak, just sit there, and I'll work my way all the way over. So, having said that, at this time, if you have a comment relative to the agenda only, and that means specifically to tonight's agenda, I'll start over here. Just raise your hand if you would like to speak. I didn't get there yet, John. Yes, Mr. Hable, come forward.
Well, I just didn't want you to jump the gun there. Hey, I was at the agenda-setting meeting, and this is not the agenda we set in the meeting. There's at least five additions and two or three subtractions. Are we planning on amending the agenda at some point? I said I was at the agenda-setting meeting, and some things are now on the agenda that weren't on the agenda at the agenda-setting meeting, and I asked if we're going to amend the agenda. For example, cutting of trees, Carrie Borrell's resignation. This documentation for appeal of court orders wasn't on that agenda as well. We, well, they took out the student separation agreement. 1.6 was removed from the agenda. Are you planning on amending the agenda?
Actually, that is a good point. We did have some changes that came last minute, and that's par for the course. Oftentimes, especially when you have seven days in between meetings, you will have those, and that's a good point. Thank you very much. So, at this point, while you're standing there, I will accept a motion to amend the agenda as it has been written. Director Whitco, you'll have a second. Director Livingood, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? The agenda has been amended and approved. Thank you for pointing that out, Mr. Hable.
Proposal removal of trees on school property? We're selling that property at the end of this month. Is there a reason we're paying for it and not the new owners?
The problem is, is that it's currently still our property, and this tree is in danger of falling onto someone else's property, and they brought it to our attention, and we've tried to get someone out there to take care of this. It's taken us a while, but it is our responsibility right now.
Is it safe to assume that Director Angstrom will be abstaining from that, Bill?
From the tree removal?
Yes, since he has a relationship with the property purchaser?
That has nothing to do, this is currently our property, and we, as a school district, have to take care of that tree, just like the one that's on Manche Road. So, this has nothing to do with the sale. This is something that is our property now, and we have to take care of it.
So, we're anticipating the tree falling?
Correct.
And now, end of the line?
Correct. It has been, this has been an ongoing issue, we've tried to get someone out there to get this taken care of.
Any comment on the reason Carrie Borrell is stepping down as varsity cheerleading coach?
Received her letter today.
All right, we get to that point, and I'll continue to work my way across the room. Yes, please come up, state your name and where you're from. Thank you. Can you drop that down?
Hi, I'm Tricia Solansky. Can you be my address or just my?
Just borough township.
Ross Dravert Township. I'm just, I'm not allowed to respond, but I would just like to ask a question, how a certain board member can continue to remain on the board, which you obviously defund the review. Can you now? Sorry, I just wanted to ask, since we're not allowed to respond, how a current board member can remain on the board when she obviously does not believe in this whole policy?
At this point, I will say this, that's not part of, that is not relative to the agenda. That comment, if you wish to make, can be made at the end of the meeting when we have open comments from citizens.
Okay, I'll be there.
Thank you. Okay, continuing on, and I just want to remind everybody, we have this set up for a reason. First part of the comments are for the agenda, so that people can address what's taking part in the agenda. Then, at the end of the meeting, we have the open comments. So, I'm not trying to cause a problem, but this is what we follow all the time. So, you will have your chance to say or speak. Okay, anybody else? Relative to the agenda? All right, if there's no one else that has anything relative to the agenda, we will close the comments at this time. Dr. Dahl, communications, please. Oh, wait, we have to approve the minutes for the work session meeting of April 9th, 2019, and the regular meeting minutes for April 15th, 2019. I'll entertain a motion to approve those minutes. Director Grata?
Second.
Second, Director Kovach, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Now, Dr. Dahl, communications.
Communications, information only. You can hear me. Okay, monthly departmental reports. We have A through H. Communications, information only. We have the WIU superintendent's meeting minutes from April 11th, 2019. We have the CWCTC work session and meeting minutes from April 17th, 2019. We have Edward F. Kunko Jr., Disabled Veterans Real Property Tax Exemption Certification. And we have Howard C. Laverick, Disabled Veterans Real Property Tax Exemption Certification. Those are all for information only. Next, we have communications, board action required. We have 1.1 to 1.13. We have the CWCTC proposed budget for 2019-20. No, okay. I don't have to read all of them, we have them in front of you. Are you going to do these all in one session?
Yes, we will do this as a consent agenda, unless someone, I will ask, is there anybody here who plans on opposing a vote on any of these items? Because we'll have to do that as a roll call. Anyone?
Which ones are we talking about, Mr.?
1.1 through 1.13. Mr. Director Kovach.
Yes, I plan on voting no on 1.10.
Okay, so we will do, let's start with 1.1 through 1.9 for a consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve items 1.1 through 1.9?
So moved.
Director Angstrom, do I have a second?
Second.
Director Yushak, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion's carry unanimously. Now, 1.10, that is the change to the sports eligibility criteria. This will have to be a roll call vote. Director Callaway Rodriguez, would you please pull the board? We need a motion? Okay, that's right, we do need a motion. Thank you, Director Grata. I was getting ahead of myself here.
I'll move.
Director Grata makes the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Director Angstrom. All right, roll call vote, please, Director.
Motion.
Question?
I would like, you know, the superintendent to explain the discussion we had and some of the reasoning behind the proposal, so that there's a clearer understanding why we're doing what we intend to do.
So, our athletic director, Matt Humbert, came to me to talk about our eligibility criteria for sports, and I asked him, one of the things I do is I question a lot, so I asked him to do some research on, are we comparable to other districts? Where are we? So, he actually polled quite a few districts, and our criteria right now, as it is, is that students must be passing 6.5 credits. Well, the PIAA rules are passing four full-time credits. There is no one else that we found that has as high of an eligibility requirement as we do. So, we did not want to go down all the way to just four full-time credits, so we looked. There were five other districts that he had polled that did something that was kind of what we called a compromise between the two, and that is where we came up with recommending that they cannot be failing two classes and must be passing four full-time credits to be eligible to do sports. Because one of the things we were finding is, some kids may be, they may have an elective, if they only have seven credits, and if they're not passing that elective, they're not eligible to play sports. So, this is our recommendation.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Dahl. Is that sufficient, Director Grata? Aye. And let's move forward with the vote, please.
Director Waco?
Yes.
Director Yushak?
Yes.
Director Angstrom?
Yes.
Excuse me, Director Callaway Rodriguez, yes? Director Ford?
Yes.
Director Grata?
Yes.
Director Livingood?
Yes.
Director Rude?
Yes.
Director Kovach?
No, and I'd like to clarify my no vote. While I respect all the benchmarking analysis that everyone's done within the district, we do have an attendance problem for our students. That he'll go into the PIA minimum with four credits, along with being able to fail two classes, I just don't think, I just believe we're setting the bar a little bit too low for our student athletes, and I really just want to make sure that they are, remain student athletes and not just athletes. So, again, I do respect, I do believe we needed to take action. In the business meeting, I made the case to have five credits and be able to fail two classes, so I thought that was more appropriate.
Thank you.
I agree with the spirit and the intent of Director Kovach's concern here. I also think it's important that we maintain parity with just about every school district in western Pennsylvania, and even in that, we're still a step above. So, hopefully, we won't have an issue with this, but it's something that we apparently have needed to address for some time to remain competitive and to achieve parity.
And I want to point out, if I remember correctly from the facts that were presented, our new guidelines will fall in line to, what, six other school districts? Five other school districts. So, we would be number six that still have elevated eligibility compared to the rest of the schools in the WPIL. So, having said that, we will now look at items.
Other question, Mr.?
Yes, go ahead, Director Waco.
Do we take attendance into the, against part of attendance? Is there an attendance?
There is a component to the PIAA requirements as far as being able to participate, and I'm going to quote this wrong, I think, but if you miss more than 20 days in a school year, you can be held ineligible for the entire year. So, there are requirements.
And if you're, if you miss 20 days the prior semester to, like in the spring semester, and you're coming into the fall, you will be ineligible until such time a certain amount of days pass. I'm not sure what the exact, as Director Humbert would know, but I do remember that from my days as a coach. So, there are attendance components that are a part of this as well. Plus, you must be in attendance the day of a contest for at least half a day as well. Okay, can we move ahead now? Is everybody okay? All right, we now need to do 1.11 through 1.13. As long as no one's going to vote no, we can do that as a consent agenda. Can I have a motion to approve those items? Director Yushak, do I have a second? Director Ford? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion's carry unanimously. Dr. Dahl?
2.0 tuition, graduate tuition reimbursement for BBAA, and graduate tuition reimbursement for Act 93 contract agreements.
Do I have a motion to approve the tuition reimbursements?
So moved.
Director Angstrom? Have a second?
Second.
Director Livingood? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Dr. Dahl?
3.0 other, permission Brigade of Shadda to scrabble 2016, Chevy up Lander.
2006?
I did that last time.
You did that the last time, too.
I was submitting last time. It's 2006, I apologize.
Just wanted to clarify that, because if we're scrapping in 2016, I can see people might be upset about that.
3.2 is board authorized budget transfer funds. This is reclassifying information based on our recommendations from our audit.
And just to clarify for everyone, so that there's no questions, Mr. Doritz, our business manager, would you please just give a brief explanation as to why things have to be done this way?
Yeah, basically, the way we budgeted in the past, we wanted to keep the expenses, these are lease payments, we wanted to keep it in the departments that benefit from them. The first two are in the technology department, the next two are in the maintenance department, and the 2700, that's the bus leases. So, we classify those as equipment expenses, because they were leases to purchase equipment. Based on the audit recommendation from our audit last year, our auditors suggested that we classify those as principal and interest releases. It's just a PDE reporting thing, in order to reclassify it from one area to the next, we're not adding any expenses to the budget.
All right, any other questions? In that case, I'll entertain a motion to approve 3.1 and 3.2.
So moved.
Director Kovach, second. Director Waco, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Motion carries unanimously.
Facilities usage requests, we had none this month. Financial reports, A through J.
Have a motion to accept the financial reports, A through J. Director Grata, second?
Second.
Director Ushak, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed?
New business documentation to appeal the court order, the Order of Court Case Number 2299 of 2019.
Moved by Director Grata, seconded by Director Kovach. Do I need to do this as a roll call? No? All those in favors? We have a one extension, that's why I said we need to have it as a roll call. Do you please do this as a roll call, Director Callejon Rodriguez?
Director Waco?
Yes.
Director Ushak?
Yes.
Director Angstrom?
Yes.
Director Callejon Rodriguez, yes. Director Ford?
Yes.
Director Grata?
Yes.
You have to abstain. That's the appeal court order. You have to abstain on that one. So, you abstain.
Director Livinggood?
Yes.
Director Rude?
Yes.
Director Kovach?
Yes.
Motion carries eight, zero with one extension. Dr. Dowell?
Employment personnel, we have subs, we have an FMLA leave, we have a leave, we have summer maintenance, student workers, we have resignations, we have retirement resignation, and we have coaches.
No.
You can do one through three.
We can do one through three and then five through seven.
Correct.
Yeah, it's okay. All right. Do I have a motion to accept or to approve numbers one, two, and three?
So moved.
Director Livinggood?
Second.
Second, Director Angstrom, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Now, number four, summer maintenance, student workers, we're going to have another extension here, therefore, we need a roll call vote. Please, Director Callejon Rodriguez.
Director Waco?
Yes.
Director Ushak?
Yes.
Director Angstrom?
Yes.
Director Callejon Rodriguez, yes. Director Ford?
I have to abstain from this vote. I have a child that's up for the summer employment.
Director Grata?
Yes.
Director Livinggood?
Yes.
Director Rude?
Yes.
Director Kovach?
Yes.
Motion carries eight, zero with one extension. I'll entertain a motion at this time to accept five, six, and seven resignations, retirement resignations, and hiring of new coaches. Director Kovach, shall I have a second? Director Waco, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Dr. Dowell?
Our committee reports, Facilities, Grounds, Transportation Committee, Mr. Chairman Waco.
We had a walkthrough on May 7th of the Ross Draper, old, former Ross Draper Middle School. Again, trying to determine the best use, what uses and the cost. And then on the bus, bus department, Mr. Beshada notified me that the state police are doing inspections July 23rd, 24th, and 25th. Thank you.
Athletics and Activities Committee, Mr. Grata?
Yes, we have the reorganized Athletics Committee, which my chair and I have a little bit of a lengthy report. Of course, we have the two resignations, Hicksey Darryl Hickson Ball and Kerry Horrell, that would be boys, Florida City Baseball, and Shirley, respectively. We are working on reviving and adapting the wrestling program. We have a very successful senior awards banquet, we've had our spring sports, and we've had a lot of, you know, success there with the baseball team advancing to the first round, which unfortunately, I lost there. And in track and field, we had a lot of surprises, even though this is a school district without a track and field facility. We nevertheless had some great performances by Hunter Martin in hurdles, Casey Wakeman in javelin, Cindy Basiac in high jump, and let's see, oh Hannah Saitinger in the 800 meters, I believe. But the thing that I would like to say most of all, that I think all of us appreciate from this month's athletic report is this. On Saturday, May 4th, 18 student athletes represented BBA at the Special Olympics Track and Field Event at Norman High School. While BBA athletes participated in three events throughout the morning, they ran track, threw softballs in javelin, and jumped during various field events. Our BBA athletes were cheered on by more than 20 BBA volunteers, including teachers, staff, students, friends, and family. Collectively, the BBA athletes brought on more than 30 gold medals, medals, and a variety of silver and bronze. Congratulations to them, and thanks to staff, families, students, and volunteers. Thank you.
All right, Governance, Finances, Operations Committee?
No report at this time.
Human Resources Committee?
We had a meeting on April the 29th, everybody seemed to have put everything together to close the year with their comments and praises. This one. And one of the issues, and one of the members said that they really appreciate the time that we give to them to come before the board and come before the administration just to be able to have the opportunity to air any problems that there are and any positive things that they want you bring up. So, it's a good meeting, Human Resources Committee is a good meeting to just share problems and praises. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Curriculum, Technology, and Arts Committee?
Let me just say, there's been a lot of really good things going on. I don't have time to highlight all of them, but I want to pick a few from each of the schools. Ryan Merrick recently passed his unmanned aircraft general operator's licensing exam at Pittsburgh Institute for Aeronautics. That is code for drones. That is not an easy credential to earn, so congratulations to Ryan. The Project Lead the Way... The Project Lead the Way Engineering Design Development Course, there was a group of four students, Jordan French, Luke Long, Nathan Lynch, and Jarrett Moscow participated in a robotics competition called Box IQ, and that's a manufacturing workforce development program. The smart sport is designed to provide high school students with an exciting hands-on team experience where they learn about the pathways to a rewarding career in manufacturing. These students work for an entire year with an industry advisor to guide them through their design and manufacturing process. A special thanks goes out to DMI Companies of Nongehela, who was their primary contact. It's also important to note that some of the students that were mentioned are graduating and heading off to college to major in engineering, and these are the kind of activities that our school system supports that really help them move in their professional careers. Marion Elementary, Brian Stanford from Code.org observed them from the fifth grade class coding, their computer technology class with Mrs. McIntyre. They do a coding project as part of a dance party, and they showcase their coding and problem-solving skills. At the middle school, John Carrickus, Dan Beckley, Jason Scaramucci organized a mobile ag lab to come to BVA MS this week, just a couple weeks ago, and that kicked off a school-wide science fair project. Carol Fro, congratulations and thank you for your leadership in the production, Emma, which is a pop musical. And also to a host of teachers from Belverne Middle School who hosted tons of clubs, and I know this happens a lot at the schools, but some of them dealt with STEM, with art, with yearbook, newspaper, ping pong, physical education. Thanks to those teachers for giving that extra time. Ross River Elementary, Carol Horrell, a sixth grade gifted teacher, completed the Hazelwood Green Restoration Architecture Competition through Pittsburgh History and Landmarks Foundation at Madison High School, and they were awarded the following excellence awards. Jack Moffett for Most Enthusiastic Presentation, Maria Spedeleri and Wyatt Lucas for Most Creative Use of Converting the Turntable Into a Planetarium, Grace West, Dominique Solasky, Maggie Griznick, and Natalie Palanchar for Best Interior Design. The last two, Jennifer Barkey, Scott Kennel, on April 11th, 2019, the students at Ross River Elementary participated in the first ever STEM showcase. It's an evening event designed to spark students' interest in science, technology, engineering, art, and math, and was open to students of grade K to 6. And finally, special thanks to the Nagy family from the, who donated kindly modeling class for the Nature's Pathway Taxidermy. The students are using that, prepare for a field trip to Carnegie Museum of Natural History. Students also read novels, heard about dinosaurs, and used the clay to mold their dinosaurs as a souvenir. So, all of those people that I mentioned, congratulations, thank you. And there are a ton more that I don't have time to mention, but they also deserve our accolades.
At this time, excuse me, I have some announcements to make. First of all, to inform the public, we did meet in the executive session this evening from 6:00 until just a little bit after 7:00, which is why we're a little bit late getting here, to discuss personnel issues. We also had an executive session on Tuesday, May 7th at 6:00 PM for personnel discussion, followed by a tour of the Ross Draper Middle School building. Another executive session was held on Tuesday, May 14th, following the work session agenda meeting to discuss student discipline and personnel. And there will be a special meeting to pass the preliminary budget on Thursday, May 23rd, 2019 at 7:00 PM at the administration offices, 270 Crest Avenue, Belverne. Do I have any comments from board and/or administration at this time? All right, if I have no comments from board or administration, this will open the comments from the citizens, and this is an open comment session. Again, ground rules are this, we ask you to come up, identify yourselves clearly so that Mrs. Kunko can hear and take down the notes. And we are limiting you to three minutes, and you can only speak once. Does everybody understand the ground rules?
Sure.
Okay, at that time, I'm going to do like I always do. I'll start over here. So, if you're interested in speaking, raise your hand.
I'm sorry, but Michelle, I'm going to point at you because this whole thing meets home to me. I've already told a couple board members. When this was all going on, my daughter was on the way there. I had a niece, I have family members of Shalray. When I was in fourth grade, Michelle. I lost my dad to drinking and driving over there on 70, right by the stockpours. And to see all these pictures and these girls think it's a joke, it's not a joke. I got married almost eight years ago. I didn't hear my dad walking me down that aisle. Think about how these girls are making a joke and teach them it's not a joke and be serious. And Belverne School District, I hope you win your appeal because this is no joke.
Mr. Habel?
Awkward follow-up question, not follow-up question. Why is the release of the budget being delayed?
In what way?
We were having a special meeting to pass the preliminary budget. Why isn't it being released today?
I made the recommendation to move the meeting to Thursday because obviously, tomorrow's elections, we have a lot going on, we've not been able to spend as much time as we need to. So, we've done special meetings for budget, we did it last year when I was here. In fact, we didn't approve until the last day of the month last year. So, this gives us a little more time to look at that.
So, one of the reasons you're delaying the release of the budget is because of the election?
I think that we need more time, and I do think that doing it the night before the election is maybe not the best idea. And that was my call, I'm the one who suggested we move it. And that was to give everybody...
Also, Mr. Habel, we have three brand-new members who were just recently appointed, and Dr. Dowell has willingly set up individual meetings with them and with Mr. Doritz, if needed, to go over the budget procedure and to help explain it to them. You know, we want to do our due diligence when it comes to the budget, it's very important. And with everything else that's been going on, we felt it would be best to postpone it until we can concentrate on the budget and the budget alone.
So, there has been no meetings about the budget so far this year?
We've had, you've been there when Mr. Doritz has presented stuff, but as, well, you haven't, well, we have had, there've been workshop sessions and so forth, but the bottom line is, it's a preliminary budget. It is not the final budget. Preliminary budgets always end up getting amended. We have to pass a preliminary budget by the end of this month, by May 31st. And if I remember correctly, last year, we did it on the 31st of May because we couldn't get a consensus to vote for it the first time. We had it at the regular monthly meeting, we couldn't, we couldn't pass it at that point, you know.
John, if I may answer from one of the school board members that were recently appointed. You know, we were in a workshop session last week, and when Dr. Dowell recommended, and you know, basically, the entire collective board agreed on moving the meeting because we needed to make sure that we were clear on all the assumptions being incorporated in the budget, which included but not limited to mainly three different items. Number one, what was the proposed tax increases, and what did that mean across municipalities and counties? Number two, what was incorporated into the budget based on a new bond release? And number three, what was incorporated into the budget related to the collective bargaining agreement that's forthcoming with the Belverne Area Education Association? And again, we asked for that, and we have to be careful in these preliminary budget meetings that we don't go to a meeting with more than four members. So, again, unfortunately, we had to deal with a lot of disappointing, embarrassing incidents last week that we didn't get to have budget meetings. So, that's where we're at. If we were to come here today, I even emailed the rest of the board that I'd be voting no because I have no idea what the final assumptions in that budget were. So, again, I just want to make sure that I'm clear from my perspective, that's why the budget was delayed. All right. Just, correct me if I'm wrong, but if the board did meet and discuss the budget as a board in a executive session, that would be a violation of sunshine, I think.
Yes, it would, but we did not. We had presentations from our business managers as to what numbers were, but no discussion was made.
When was that public presentation?
It was in a workshop session.
And we've been doing budgets since January. We had a preliminary proposal that we put out, we've had multiple public meetings talking about the budget.
I don't, maybe I'm misunderstanding.
I'm not saying we will be, it is a public meeting on Thursday.
Yeah, and we will be discussing everything, and everything will be out in the open for everybody to see.
Can I also, can I also say something? This month, basically, when we have workshops, they're always the third Tuesday of the month. So, it should be tomorrow, which our workshop should be. Our regular meeting should be next Monday, not this Monday. Because of the election, which is tomorrow, they were taking our building, therefore, these meetings were moved. We haven't had the time to really get together with the budget. And as the other ones have said also, in the last two or three years that I've been on the board, I don't think there has been one that has gone probably before May the 30th or May the 29th to have it voted on because of ties and because of negating the preliminary budget.
So, as it stands right now, you don't know whether the tax increase, decrease, or staying the same because you've not been presented that information?
We've been presenting scenarios, so the board has seen different options. What that vote will come down to, I can't answer that, but they have been presented with different scenarios.
At public meetings?
At public meetings, they've also been given information on different things, so, but there's been no vote taken, no anything.
All right. And since Tim and Joe takes great notes, there'll be some other agendas and meetings, there'll be...
And since Tony Joe takes great notes, there'll be some other agendas and meetings, where the budget is presented publicly.
Yes.
So, Michelle, to clarify, we are not going to meet in public to discuss the preliminary budget.
No, we aren't.
We're gonna meet in groups, listen to four, or less than four.
One of the suggestions was to have small group meetings if people wanted to, less than four. And you heard Amy Zunno, who was here, saying that was an absolutely acceptable, because we have people who are at different levels of the budget. So if someone wanted to come in and ask some specific questions and get information prior to going in, we could absolutely do that. There's nothing wrong with doing that. But we could not do that with all nine of us together, if it was not public.
And, but the answer to Michelle's question is, we will have a public meeting on Thursday, May 23rd at 7:00 PM at the admin building, and that's where the preliminary budget will be discussed.
And we, the public, wouldn't be able to know what those questions were that the four people asked, because those questions will be asked in secret?
No, it won't be in secret.
No, they're not being asked in secret.
John, you just said you're gonna have a meeting...
John, what they're... Let me explain. Can I explain, please?
Sure.
It's no different, and let me say, when I was a first-year board member, the budget was like Greek to me. It took a while to finally understand everything. And it took extra time and tutoring. And the business manager at the time, Eileen Navish, had us come in, and she explained things to us, explained how things work. That is not secret meetings. What that is, is educational in the sense that, and that's what is being offered to these new board members, educational, so that they understand what it is. You're trying to make something out that's not there.
Why cannot the general public get the same education as the new school board directors then?
Can I, can I let me say this? Once the preliminary budget is passed, if it's passed next Thursday, if there's agreement, and there is public discussion of that budget at that meeting, it is posted and available to the public for 30 days to comment on a budget. And those comments also could be made prior to the final vote on a budget, which comes after 30 days, and I think it coincidentally falls at the same time as our June meeting. But all of that, and all the different categories are posted, and questions can be raised to the board, to the business manager, and to his superintendent during that 30-day required by law posting interval.
And John, to get back to your point, any question that we personally ask at these less-than-four meetings for information, so we can make an educated decision when we vote on a public, in the public, I'd be more than happy to document the questions that I personally ask and answers I get, so it's not in secret. And I'll give you, actually, I'll make a photo copy and give you a copy of every question and answer I get.
And I can say that when I had my first meetings with Eileen Navish, when she taught me, it was specifically to explain what each part of the budget was, what it included, what it didn't include, why it had to be put in a certain way, just like we had Mr. Duritz explain why we had to change the lease setup, how it was put in the budget because of what the auditors told us. So, things change year in and year out. It was Greek to me. I didn't understand it. Now, I understand budgets much better, but it took time, and it took people educating me. And that's all we're trying to do, is give our new directors that opportunity. Plus, I want to, I want to get a chance to look at it as well, and think about it, and have the opportunity to make an educated decision as to what we need to do, rather than just rush to judgment, if that makes sense.
It does, I'm just...
We're not trying to do anything behind closed doors. We're not trying to hide anything from anybody. For the edification of the public, it's a $38 million document with more than three dozen sources of revenue alone. And I've put dozens of ours in it, and JR will tell you that I send individual questions a couple of times a week, a bucket of about this and that, and why, and justify and tell me, and so forth. And other directors too have the same opportunity, and many of themselves avail themselves of that opportunity because it's important. I know it affects every property owner, every business, and the very vitality of our school district. There's a lot of time. That is one of the most important things we do with regard to property taxes and how it affects residents of the community, aside from what we do to benefit the students.
And John, my last comment is, believe me, we would have preferred to be spending our time last week on different matters compared to what we spent our time on. I would, I would deeply would have been prefer, prefer to be reviewing the budget and asking those specific questions compared to what we spent our time on.
Thank you. All right.
I want to add something, one thing too. Just please remember that what we are proposing at the end of the month is preliminary. There is still an entire 30 days to make changes, and from my experience last year, we do make changes, we really get down to the nitty-gritty, so please understand, it is preliminary. Thank you.
All right. Moving along now. Yes?
Obviously, in light of recent events, there's some stuff that's happened, so I'm not gonna get into, but there was an issue that was kind of related to this that happened in high school between around, probably a month ago, that happened, I don't have a lot to talk about, I'm going to. The MIC sad incident, if you guys remember, here about this video, about the prom disaster. A couple of students that were in MIC sad, ended up, they put together a video that had to do with drunk driving and how not to drive, drive drunk at the prom. And what ended up happening was the students in the video that were trying to make it brought actual booze to the, to the video, and they ended up, like, actually getting hammered for the video that they were trying to make. And my question is, it seems like that got swept under the rug when this, in the outrage that happened about this recent thing, that seemed to be whenever the board started to care about it, and the, this, that was exactly got swept under the rug, and sure, most people here don't even know about it. So I'm curious to get a comment on why that seems to get a go in notice in this most recent thing went crazy.
I can answer that. Sorry, I was consulting here. That incident was not a school-sponsored event. We did not ask those students to do that at that time.
Yeah.
So they took that upon themselves. So it was not school-sponsored.
It was for a school project, though, right?
It was for, they were doing it for a school project, correct?
Yeah. Yeah, so, but I understand that, but the fact is that they were, they felt the need to do this, and there seemed to be no serious punishment given to them. A lot of the stuff that happened was not even offered to them. Like, I know before anything happened, this recent thing, they weren't allowed to go to prom, and obviously all this stuff, I don't want to get into that, but that was never even put forward to these kids who happened to this. And some of these people are my friends, I'm not trying, I'm not defending them, what I'm saying, it just seems like that grade ranking is an issue that is not attacked enough, like, by our school as a whole. I feel like that it's not taken seriously as it should.
Thank you.
Congratulations on your job, Phillips, so we're...
Thank you.
Okay, continuing.
I'm gonna read the definition of a school board member that I Googled off on Google. "School board members are locally elected public officials entrusted with governing the community's public schools. The role of the school board is to ensure that the school districts are responsive to the values, the beliefs, and the priorities of their communities. With that being said, I would like to ask the question, how a certain board member can still remain on the board when she has active litigation against the board regarding our disciplinary policy? I'm not sure how you can remain there with a clear conscience and think that you can serve this district. You do not need the values of this district, and I honestly do not want you making another decision for my child or any other children in this district." I would ask that you do your right thing for once and resign.
Generally, generally speaking, board members are not tied to a decision of a staff or administration, and if a decision is wrong, the board should vote their conscience to correct.
Okay, now, moving along. Yes, back there.
Angel Pemashanka, Ross Draper Township. In light of everything that's happened, I would just like you all to consider looking into other programs that educate our children on drug and alcohol, because the attitude of our students that have been displayed is atrocious. It's horrifying how flippant they are, how disrespectful they are, how they have no regard for authority and have no respect. And the bigger picture is that these students were driving, they're drinking, they could have bought into a car, they could have killed somebody else, they could have killed themselves. So we, as a community, are not educating them properly. We are not instilling the values into them that need to be instilled. And maybe we need to take a look at what we're programming to better educate them, so that they actually feel remorse, because there was no remorse felt. And I can guarantee you that, I can guarantee you that if something would have happened to one of those children, the exact same parents that are suing the district would be holding you liable. And they're telling...
The question I have regarding...
Could you please identify yourself, please?
Vivian Salaski, Ross Draper Township. The question I have regarding everything that has gone on this past two weeks in regards to the Belverne cheerleaders, is how is, there are two separate issues going on here. There are, is the Relay for Life incident where they were caught underage drinking in Charlotte during a school event. There are also social media pictures that were taken afterwards that represent them as cheerleaders of the community and represent our school district. Why aren't they being handled separately? With that said, our bylaws constitute that you are a representative of Belverne Area School District. You should be positive and a good role model, and shouldn't be putting FQ and a towel with a boy behind you, and these pictures showing that you're drinking all over the place, everywhere. With that said, I would ask those girls to step down if you guys can't make the decision to remove them from the cheer squad. They do not deserve to be on that squad, and the right thing to do is for them to step down and for you to remove them.
First of all, it's difficult to follow Ms. Wingwood's comments, and it won't have nearly as much of an impact. But I'd like to just say that I'm not angry with these girls. I'm angry at the adults that made them believe that their actions don't have consequences. Their actions have affected more than themselves. I want to thank you for now letting the actions of others affect us all. I'm angry that the girls haven't humbled themselves after they were given a second chance. They made a mockery of the charity of their, they made a mockery of their charity and their tribe, and of their district, and laughed when their coach resigned. I personally never wanted any of these girls or their parents to be ridiculed or face the harshest of punishments. They're not in my house. All I want is for my own kids to live in a district they can be proud of. We need to stick together and build a reputation of this district back up. We have so much to be proud of. It's a shame that there are people within our district and on this board that continuously work at changing, modifying, and adapting all of the rules to benefit themselves or their children. So, I'm asking, can you please tell these girls why the actions of their teammates are now left without a coach, cannot attend Relay for Life, may not be able to attend Cheer Camp? I could keep on going. I'm seriously asking for someone to give the girls that chose to make better choices an answer. Really, I'd like a response, particularly for the girls, please.
What do we have in here? There's nice cheerleaders here.
Yeah, how about all the cheerleaders stand up?
Stand up, please.
Casey Magus, Washington Township.
I'm sorry, could you say that again?
Casey Magus, Washington Township. Hi, I'm Casey Magus, I'm currently a junior, and I've cheered for the school districts since seventh grade. I was at Relay for Life representing both B B cheer in our school district wearing this shirt when I was pulled away from a volleyball game to get revived by the police. I've had my breast lacerated, but me and 32 others who weren't involved or being punished and embarrassed for others' actions. Here's how me and some others feel. Yes, we all agree that this was a stupid mistake, but to be posting stuff, come on now. I understand that we are a team that serves each other's back, but they all lost my respect. I thought to myself, they will be making things better or even apologize, but no. Everything they post and do makes everything worse. I mean, I can't even go to Walmart wearing a B B cheer shirt without being questioned. Heck, I have to tag in at Walmart in less than a month, and someone just posted this yesterday. I would read to everyone what it says. "I am giving money to dance club collecting in front of Walmart today, and I was thinking, the Belverne Area Cheerleaders should collect for beer money in front here." Now, I think to myself, is it safe for me to tag, or am I going to be questioned and insulted for being a B B cheerleader? Another thing that has happened is a couple of days after the whole Relay thing happened, we had a pep rally at the high school. This happened at the end, when us cheerleaders stand in front of our grades to do a little cheer, to see who was the loudest to win this district. When a group of boys in front of me, who are boyfriends, family, and friends of the famous eight, as one of the boys said to all the juniors, "Don't say anything." So I said, "Wow, I can't stand you guys." So he said, "Sorry, we don't support drinkers." Then I said, "We weren't the ones who drank." He said, "It still involves you guys." So as you guys can tell, since we didn't drink or anything, still affects us. Another problem is that our cheer coach just resigned on us, which really upset me, because she can't stand this, and it seems like she gave up on us. But who would want to cheer, who would want to coach this mess? As long as those girls are on the team, it's gonna be nothing but drama. We are no longer going to our cheer camp next month due to all of this. This has done nothing but separate this team. Yes, us 33 are fighting together through this, but we will never be the same. Us 33 are looked at as drunk cheerleaders while famous eight, doesn't seem to care. I don't just consider these 33 girls just as teammates, I think of them as my friends too. We will stick together through this problem and fight for what is right. Also, let me just say, I am not perfect in any way. I will make mistakes in life, which I will own up to, but I will never have others be punished for what I did, especially my friends and teammates.
Wait, can you be funny when our kids are... My name is Dana Marshing, hi.
Where are you, where are you from, Dan?
I'm from Belverne.
That's fine, that's all we need to know, thank you.
Okay. What, I don't, why do you constantly have a smell on your face? When our girl's safety is an issue here.
I've been smelling, that's just my, I've been smelling all the...
But we have fundraisers coming up. We have two car washes. How am I supposed to protect these girls? Yes, Susan is going to be helping me, but I'm gonna have to have fathers come now, because I don't know what the public is going to do to these girls. That is a big moneymaker for our cheerleaders, and it affects them if we don't have it. So, how are our kids supposed to be protected? Tagging? Is it car wash or anything else? This is ridiculous, it's out of control. I just want to know, who's... I just want to know who's going to protect them, in school and at fundraisers?
Anybody else? Yes?
Good evening. Jennifer Metacosh, Ross Draper Township, long-term president, sorry. I wrote this, and if you don't mind, I'm going to just read it. Our daughter, Mary, will be in ninth grade next year. She tried out and made the varsity cheer in the competition squad. She was excited and proud to be a BVA high school cheerleader. As her parents, we were also excited and proud of her accomplishments. She's a Metacosh and a Bell. Both names do not go unpleished. Mike and I, not instant in our youth or even adulthood, but we are trying our best to guide our kids' moral compasses positively, knowing that they will mess up along the way. However, this is our daughter. Her uncle, whom our oldest Chad, is named after, died at the age of 17 from leukemia. Did not go to the prom, he did not walk at commencement, youth privilege that was not afforded to him. Our oldest Chad cannot participate in the sport that he loves, not because he was day drinking at a cancer fundraiser, but because he injured himself doing something he prided himself on and loved. Perspective needs to be in order. I do not believe that those punishments were extreme. Our kids have to sign a drug and alcohol policy prior to the start of each athletic season, knowing the consequences of their actions if they choose to make the wrong choices. Our kids would not have attended the prom or commencement, they would have sold their formal wear and sent it to the money, sent the money to Relay for Life and worked off their fines. I may have fought the 45-day suspension due to the impact it may have on their academic adult futures, but I would have taken that to the school. And considering that every student athlete signs the drug and alcohol policy to give specific punishments for offenses, our kids would sit out their next season by our word in agreement with the policy. Today, we had a very heart-to-heart conversation with our daughter in regards to the controversy that is surrounding the high school cheerleaders. Is this something that she truly, truly wants to continue to be associated with? We are not passing judgment on any person involved because we have known many of them for a very long time, but we cannot help wanting to protect our daughter from the ramifications that are to come from the recent events. Kids are being, imagine our cheerleaders and the welcoming they're going to receive when they travel to other schools to represent and support our mighty leopards. I share this with you to show support for the district's decision to appeal the court's decision and to possibly sway my influence to the parents of these students and their decision to fight for something that they know deep down is not what they should be fighting for. Thank you.
Yes, Director Ushan.
I think what's got lost in some of this too is we overlook, we are overlooking the 600 and some plus kids who stayed at Charleroy and raised the money for the Relay for Life. I had a sister who died of cancer, and to me, that was a very, very important event, the Relay for Life. And I've done this in my past with her also. And I just wanted to thank the kids who raised the money and did a fine job at Charleroy.
Yes, I'd like to make one comment in light of Director Rodriguez-Kellaway's definition of a board member. I would ask that our solicitor kind of explain to the audience what the formal procedures were after the informal hearing, if the parents of these students were not satisfied or questioned the proposed consequences that the administration... Director Kellaway-Rodriguez, you said that it's the responsibility of a board member or a board to question the consequences. Unfortunately, we did not get that opportunity, and I'll let the solicitors explain it from here, how if we would have followed Pennsylvania State Code, how that would have proceeded if the parents would have basically requested a formal hearing in front of the board. Thank you.
So what would have taken place after the informal hearing is the school district would have set up formal expulsion hearings for the girls in front of the school board. We were in the process of scheduling those hearings, but prior to them being scheduled and prior to them occurring, the school district was sued and subsequently served with a petition for preliminary injunction, which basically is a, it's a court filing that, if granted, allows the court to provide some interim relief to the person who files it while the litigation is going on. So in this case, the interim relief was for the school district to not be able to impose any sort of discipline. The school district, again, was in the process of scheduling those formal hearings. None of the students involved were ever expelled because, again, it never got to that level.
Thank you. The point that I'm only trying to make in very plain English is the actions that the parents elected to take to hire an attorney basically preluded us to have formal hearings and understand any concerns with consequences. So again, you know, it will be on the record of what Director Kellaway-Rodriguez said the role of a board member was, to question any proposed consequences of the administration. Unfortunately, we weren't even given the opportunity to serve the taxpayers and children.
Jeff Ollo, Ross Draper Township. In order to grant a preliminary injunction, there has to be an underlying complaint filed. And so what was the substantive nature of the complaint that the judge rested upon in order to grant preliminary injunction relief? Because I understand there may have been a procedural defect with respect to the meaning of the punishment. What basis did they have to file suit as against the district?
What's set forth in the complaint is that the students were expelled without a formal hearing.
Process?
Well, right. So the school code says, obviously, that you have to have a formal hearing prior to expelling students. Now, that's assuming that the students don't enter into some sort of agreement with the school, where the parents would agree with the discipline and say, "Okay, we agree with that, we're not going to need a formal hearing because we're all on the same page." But the nature of the complaint says that the students were expelled without that hearing.
Okay. So essentially, as long as you guys provide them with procedural to process, you still have the right to sanctionism at the end of the day.
Yes.
So there's no lack of penalty here. It's a question of whether or not that delayed penalty may or may not occur based on the facts and the evidence, as everyone is entitled to under procedural to process.
Correct. Well, the nature of preliminary injunction is it's an emergency injunction. So whenever the complaint's filed, the emergency injunction's filed, and it's typically, you can get in front of a judge on those fairly quickly, especially in a smaller location.
Were they required to bond that, or was that exempt from bonding or...
No, it's exempt.
I would like to say that I appreciate your attendance and your comments tonight. We're doing what we can, we have to, of course, follow what the courts, both at the Commonwealth level and county level dictate to us, but also ask, if they don't do what we hope they'll do, what remedies may be available to us otherwise? But let me say that I appreciate your comments, and I think, I speak for most of us when I say, just three words, we hear you.
And I will echo that, we appreciate your comments, but we hope you will understand that we cannot comment. And that's why we have sat here. And I know some of you are upset that we didn't say anything, but we cannot. So, so that's where it stands. At this time, just to let everybody know, we will not, do I have to actually adjourn?
Yes, adjourn.
We're going to adjourn, then we are going to be going into executive session because we have personnel issues that we have to deal with. So at that point, I will entertain a motion for adjournment. Director Engstrom, second, by Director Kovach. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Meeting's adjourned.